Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Clerk Cody would you roll call of the board, please.
Supervisor Milkie?
I am here.
Clerk Cody here, Treasurer Rice?
Present.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Houck?
Sitting right next to me.
Trustee Therry?
Here.
All are here.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, oh, I'm sorry, I almost skipped four. Approval of agenda, what I might recommend, if someone's so inclined, we do have some guests this evening that are here for some of the new business, and if this board entertains going into closed session, my concern only was that that could take some time and put the public and our contractor who had to make the drive up wait longer, and I realize we have costs with attorneys sitting here, but David likes us.
I'd like to move to put them first.
They already are.
What are the two businesses?
No, put the...
What two businesses?
So move number eight.
Move number eight to, would you be clear for me?
Yes, I'd like to move.
Eight to seven.
Eight to seven.
No.
No.
Twelve.
Twelve. Like under, like twelve B or whatever, before thirteen, I'm assuming, right?
We have to move eight down to, uh...
Where it normally was.
To number eleven. Or, I mean, number...
Just put the two...
Number eleven point five.
Eleven point five, okay, so that's clear.
That's what I mean, eleven point five, I'd like to move to move number eight to eleven point five, please.
Did I hear support?
Support.
Support, so a motion by Bills, support by Brown, to approve the agenda with the one modification of moving item eight behind what is currently now item eleven, new business. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to approve the agenda with the one modification passes unanimously. Now I get to do number five, no presentations this evening, we have no public hearings. That takes us to item seven on the agenda, public comment, public comments restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the board or public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that we'll open up public comment at 7:03 PM.
Good evening, Board, Norman Worley, 5685 Carriage Lane, Uni Township. I'm here tonight with Kim Warner, who both of us are the representatives for our subdivision, and on the agenda tonight you'll be coming up with discussing the resolution number four regarding the repaving of the road for Carriage Lane. And basically, again, all the neighbors are wanting to really do this, so we have full support of everyone, so, you know, the sooner the better. Two things that needed to be, or a couple of things that need to be mentioned, one is, I mentioned last year that the neighbors would really want when this is going to, if this is brought to fruition, that they have a ten-year amortization in terms of payment. So that's something, I know in the, in the bylaws, there's, that's, you can do that. So that's one thing that they would definitely want is a ten-year amortization. Since last year, a new house has been constructed on Carriage Lane, they're in the process of building now, so I've spoken with the builder, and we're trying to coordinate to make sure that there'll be no heavy equipment brought into Carriage Lane once the road has been redone. So he's thinking that he'll probably be done by the end of May, he should have all the heavy equipment coming in there, that he'll have the topsail brought in, the concrete workers think is being done next week, so if we can do that, that would make, that would coordinate everything with this, with what we're doing and what, what he's trying to do. And then the third thing is, and Tim is aware of this, he's working on this with the Drain Commission, there is a leak in the drain down near the road, come in in someone's backyard. It's the first property on the left-hand side as you drive into Carriage Lane, so that house is on Carriage and on Millbrook, and I thought at first it was like a new artesian well or something, because it's really bubbling up, so apparently from, from Tim, I haven't checked this out, there is a clogged drain there, so we were hoping to get that done prior to the road also being constructed, because part of the concern is, you know, perhaps that wiping out some of the subsurface of the road or creating sort of sinkhole condition, so that would have to be taken into consideration too. But anyway, we're looking forward to working with the township on this, and we're looking forward for a new road, it's been long overdue, and like I said, neighbors are on board and everyone's looking forward to it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Floor is still open. Seeing nobody jumping up, we'll close public comment at 7:06 PM. So that brings us to item, our new eight, which is report board's comments. I just, I wanted to bring up one thing, I've spoken to a number of the board trustees here, trustee Bills, because of the time constraints with tribal liaison, had to step back from that, although it still works for the county, so you got that. But with that absence, and Dr. Worley that was just speaking with us has expressed interest in filling some of that role, and I did look at our policy governance, and although it may not be typical, it does not require that the liaisons that we assign come from the board of trustees, it is just that we appoint a liaison, and I would certainly be supportive of it, so I wanted to have a brief discussion on, I know we've talked about this briefly together as a board, but I know Dr. Worley would like the opportunity, and I'm very in support of that, and if this board feels that's a good idea, then I think we'd like to take that action. One concern I have is we are in the middle of two percent, you know, the decision would be made soon, and making that appointment could have a potentially positive effect, I think. And so I was glad Dr. Worley was here tonight, can I call you Norm? Glad Norm was here tonight, on behalf of the Carriage Estates neighborhood, but it's a good time to, if you want, ask him questions, obviously he would not have any ability to act unilaterally, he would work on behalf of the board. I, as supervisor, feel an obligation to try to attend any and all that I can as it, you know, as it stands, I plan on being at those tribal engagements, like I do a lot of things, but nonetheless, I think he would be a great asset for us to leverage since he's offered. So I'd be happy to ask your opinions, comments. Trust, our, call to trustee, Clerk Cody.
I think that a liaison should be a member of the board, I really feel this, I don't think it should be somebody from the public, but I do believe that Norm would be beneficial, so I think if he would be part of a liaison for the board with somebody else attending as well, I'd agree to that.
I would definitely support Dr. Worley as a liaison.
I don't think we could find a better person in the community for that position, and I'm all for it.
I like it, I think it's a great idea, and I don't see anybody else stepping up to do the job, so the job should be done.
I'm seeing or hearing general support for the idea, Clerk Cody brought up a concern. As I mentioned, I'm already planning on attending these things, if it's helpful, and you want to point me to that, I'd be happy to take that and work with Norm on this, if that helps alleviate the concern that you have.
I like that.
I was gonna say, if that is something that would be helpful to, you know, make everybody comfortable, then I would be in support of, you know, having you as a liaison and Norm also as a citizen, I guess what would you call that one? Not a citizen liaison, but you guys understand.
The deputy liaison.
Huh?
Deputy. Now we have a title.
Now you're a deputy, nice, doctor.
Oh, boy.
Do you make that appointment, or do we, you appoint yourself?
The board, the board does.
The board appoints that.
I move to appoint Supervisor Milkie as the liaison and Norm Worley as the deputy liaison, with the S C R T.
Support. Motion by Bills, support by Houck, further discussion. Clerk Cody, does this help?
Yes.
Your concern, okay.
Does anybody know if there's the actual term for this, instead of deputy liaison?
Does anybody have any discussions, I realize this may be out of order, but anybody have any questions for Dr. Worley on this?
No.
He got the ball rolling before, so he got us back going with it, I mean, we were ableton from it for two or three, four years, and he got us back on track with them, so I think he'll do a good job.
Yep, he did a phenomenal job when he was...
I have one question for Norm, was this a willing decision, or did somebody twist your arm?
Well, he can be a little unsure, you know.
Oh, I do, don't I ever?
I would be honored, I really, I think, should I come up here?
Yes, please.
As, you know, as my role and as a trustee for the four years, you know, I served as a liaison with the tribe, and I had said, when I, when we were finishing up my term, I had indicated that was probably one of the most honorable positions and responsibilities that I held with the, with the board, and, you know, I've become more familiar with the history out there, the culture, the traditions, and for me, it's been a wonderful experience, you know, and I think it's a nice bridge to have, you know, I would see me as a, as a community representative, you know, and, and, you know, continuing with the relationships that were built prior to when I was here, and I think it's important that we continue to do that, you know, so, yes, I was very willing, but there was some influence too.
Thank you so much, Norm, we do greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, any twisting I did only is because I felt it was the best thing to do.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with you.
Any further discussion? Motion to appoint Supervisor as liaison and Dr. Norm Worley as deputy liaison to the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe is on the floor, you don't need a roll call on this do you? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, congratulations or condolences, I'm not sure which, I know, I know you'll enjoy it, and thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you both.
Yes, thanks both.
Board member reports, and Clerk Cody actually asked to be first tonight, so I'm happy to hand the floor to you.
Thanks. Okay, I pass out everybody a little packet of what we did at the last election commission meeting on March 28th, so you have, and the first page is new precinct boundary descriptions, we had to change the Jamison Hall, we had too many voters, active voters, so we changed the precinct boundary, attaches the draft map, and on the bottom it outlines where we made the changes, there's a dark blue around it, and on the next map it has the approved changes and our new map, which will be posted after the May election, and notices will be mailed out after the May election. Any questions?
So notices primarily just have to go to that one area, right?
Yeah, well, we had to mail out notices for the...
Oh, right.
County commissioners, so they said just to hold off on that and mail, so they'll have two changes on their new IDs.
Oh yeah, 'cause that change is also on the south side of town too, is that?
Yeah.
Thanks for all your work on this, I've had discussions with our clerk through some of this process, she's, she's happy to share some of it, I just want to pat her on the back, 'cause I don't know, do you have any feeling for how much work this took? But our clerk put a lot of work to make this happen, so thank you.
I do want to say thank you to Joyce Smith for working on the map in such a short time.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is good, it's been a long time coming, and it's a good thing. Is that what you got?
Yes.
Yay, thanks for that. This is from this side, trustee Houck?
I told the road commission meeting on March 24th, they approved a couple of bridges to be looked into, I mean, it takes three years for a bridge to be, get the money for it, so anyways, they approved forty-two miles of crack seal where they go through all the roads and crack, seal all the cracks. I, board member reports, this is a pretty, one of the, one of the biggest discussions they had, down by the water plant, the water treatment plant, when you go straight there and you can get on the highway, some guy was going down the road, he was, you know, gonna get on the highway, and he was going real fast, you were there, weren't you, Kim? Guys, they figured he was going well over a hundred miles an hour, he cleared that road, cleared the railroad tracks, and landed on the other side of the tracks.
Holy...
Lost to the guardrail all up and everything, and, so, it really wasn't that long of a meeting, but that was one of the, you know, and then they were replacing culverts that have been damaged by snow plows and ice and rain, or ice and snow, they're putting them, but, yeah, that's pretty weird to hear that with that pickup.
It's on par with the guy that hit the bell tiger wall.
There wasn't much damage either, right, to the guy's pickup, didn't they say?
No, there wasn't, they said there wasn't a lot of damage to the trunk, but he took out the guardrail all along.
But he was okay, right?
I assume he was feeling good, so he probably would have been okay, but that had to be... I mean, that's, that's a hundred-foot jump, anyway. I went by there the next day and I thought, wow, how fast would I have to go to do that?
Well, not only that, it curves right there, it's not like, you know, you get off Isabella and you're gonna go down the freeway, there's like a curve there, and he just flew right through it.
But he cleared the railroad tracks too, I mean, the railroad tracks are from here to the dumpster off the road, anyway.
And they're high, they're not, it's not like it's...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, I'd probably, well, I'll take a ride up there, I think.
Yeah. I'm going there tomorrow.
That's all I have.
All right.
I just wanted to say, we had a good meeting last Wednesday night too, when all of us got together, when all the boards got together, that was good.
Agreed. Treasurer Rice?
Um, I don't really have anything, my sidewalks and pathways, meeting isn't until the 26th, so, yeah.
Very good.
Other than that, just great meeting on Wednesday, yeah.
Trustee Therry?
Uh, I'm, no, nothing to report today, thank you.
Okay.
Couple things from the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting on April 5th, just wanted to report, they revised their financial management policy to allow spending without board clearance to go from five thousand to twenty-five thousand, I can't believe it was five thousand, but anyway, now they can, the managers can do, or the administrators can do up to twenty-five thousand, but they still need bids, so they can't just go willing to spend twenty-five K. And then the budget amendment, they had some issues, I guess the sheriff had to cut some money, and he is not replacing one of his deputies, so that's saving them a hundred and six thousand dollars, and other things they did, they are, they made it full-time at the, of the... Isabella... Commission, Commission on Aging, they actually have a full-time caregiver trainer and support specialist now instead of part-time, because they couldn't keep the person without making out a full-time job, so that, that's gonna double the hours over there, and that's gonna give a lot better care to the senior citizens in our community. And then the other, only other thing of note that I had there was that they're, they're going to repave the animal shelter parking lot and improve it. I agree, we had a good meeting last week, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say, you were saying they have to replace, they're not gonna replace a deputy, I remember when, you know, Sheriff Maine was in here talking, I know the situation, the deputy they're not gonna replace, the guy went to the city, well, the county pays for the training and everything, they stay a couple of years, like he said, then they move on, you know, to, the city must pay more than the county, well, it did, from what he told us the last time, so...
Is that just because they didn't appropriate in the budget for that this year, or?
I, no, I don't think so.
Other costs?
There's other, there were, no, I think, and they, didn't we hear last time that they had to cut money off the top of the sheriff's building now, to do jail? I heard there's like a ten percent cut already in funding for that, but I mean, that's, in a total, I don't have the facts on it.
Right, interesting. Thank you, you good?
Yeah, thanks.
Trustee Brown?
I have nothing to report today. I'll, I'll be brief, we had a board review was in March, so just before I left for vacation, and I just want to commend the board of review, the three members, Brian Nyer, Doug LaBelle, and Sarjit Choudhary, all came very prepared, it's two very long days, and I was really impressed with the debate that they go through, they really try to do our residents service and make sure that their assessments are fair, that's what it's about, is being fair, right? And I'll compliment our assessor as well, Ed Vander Vries, did I say that right? I was so impressed by his knowledge base and his ability to use that knowledge base to aid the board members in their decision process so that they could be more effective in what they were trying to accomplish, and so kudos to that board, if you haven't been to that before, it's, it's a long few days, and they all attended their training this year, so, that's all I have. So normally, you know, I just realized as I was going through this, I didn't notice it on the agenda before, normally we have Mr. Nanny reporting, not today though.
Second meeting in a month.
It's always just the second, okay, it's always the second.
Yes.
Wow, I think I would have picked up on that before.
I didn't pick up.
The first meeting's like this.
That's, okay, all right. I'm a little punchy, forgive me, it's, we lost the sun today. Anyways, so moving on, consent agenda, happy to entertain any motions with that, and I believe trustee Houck, you had warrants?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the consent. Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Motion by Houck, support by Brown, any issues with council payable or warrants?
The only thing I was gonna say is like down on item G, I don't think on that contract that it didn't show for briding the roads that it's three applications. I didn't see it on there. But it's three applications, I think. It's, we ought to get three, but I don't think, I didn't see anywhere on there where it said there were three.
Good catch, you're right, because it normally does indicate that.
Yeah. But I didn't see where it said that, but there are, it is for three though. And then the only other thing I was gonna say on the consent agenda is, you know, I know we talked even last Wednesday night about sustainability of solar power. I mean, I'm amazed when I look at those invoices from Consumers Power about how much we pay for electricity, you know, especially the water treatment plant.
Just really quick back to your three applications, under the scope of services?
Didn't say three?
It says three.
I must have glanced over.
Uh, this contract provides for three applications of Michigan Chlorine.
I missed it then, so, all right, thank you.
Yep.
The contracts themselves indicate three.
So a motion with regards to the consent agenda to approve, any further discussion? I had one quick question on the manholes. I saw that we were pulling back, I think it was on seven of them because of the the cost. Perspective is, are those seven, I'm assuming you were involved in picking which seven?
Yeah, we took a look at them and those were the seven that we felt we'd wait till next year, we'll put those on next year's list of ones that we do.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yeah. John and Steve and I both looked at them and we're comfortable with it.
Good to hear. Any other comments? Motion to approve consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business, Carriage Hill Estates, one and number two subdivision paving special assessment district, resolution number four. Mr. Stooldryer, would you, do you have anything to introduce this?
Thank you, just a little bit of background since it's been a little while. This resolution will set the public hearing date and time that will, that for establishing the paving special assessment district. There's detail in your package, begins on page 54. The work is to grind, grind the existing pavement, apply a two and a half inch overlay and do the gravel shoulder work. Resolutions one, two and three were approved in late summer, early fall of 2021. And this particular resolution confirms that the completed assessment role be given to the township clerk and made available for public inspection prior to the public hearing, which if you approve this will be April 27th, that's 7:00 PM. And it directs the township clerk to provide proper notice of the hearing by mail and publication, which we will assist with that. So that's all I have.
Very good. You all know what to do, I'm happy that
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for the adoption of the Carriage Hill Estates one and two subdivisions, paving special assessment district, resolution number four, which sets the second public hearing date and time for the establishment of, of a paving special assessment district.
Support. Motion by Houck, support by Brown, discussion? One comment, did you notice costs actually came down a little bit because, you know, the township tries to pad it upfront so that you under promise and over deliver. So it was nice to see the, the cost for the residents come down. I think it was about $500 per parcel is, which is nice to see, especially with construction costs and everything, you know, everything's elevated right now.
Easter candy's expensive.
This is a roll call vote, unless there's objection, we'll ask Kurt to do a roll call vote on the motion to, just want to restate it, for Carriage Hill Estates, number one and two subdivision, paving special assessment district, resolution number four, setting the second public hearing date and time of, for the establishment of a paving special assessment district. That's what we're voting for. Roll call please.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes, all yeses?
Thank you. That brings us to item, I'm still calling it 11, new business B, River Road Control Valve Station Booster Pump Installation Construction Contract. Mr. Stooldryer, I assume you'd like to introduce this?
Sure, and so we're asking the board to consider approval of a construction contract with County Line Power LLC in the amount of $339,574 for the installation of a high service pump at the River Road Control Valve Station. The paperwork is on page 62 of your agenda packet. And the work here is based on the findings of the 2017 Water Reliability Report. And that report examines a lot of things, one of which is capacities and projected capacities versus what were available to produce in terms of water supply. And that report identified that we needed to do a couple of things to stay within the parameters of the Eagle requirements in the Safe Water Drinking Act. The report recommended the installation of a high service booster pump at this location and it allows for water to be moving across the, across the system, east and west, west to east, and also allows the, to be able to account for all the water tank capacities in these, in these measurements. Competitive bids were advertised, received. We received three responsive bids. The work involves the installation of the high service pump, the associated electrical upgrades and backup power supplies, SCADA work so that we can be notified when things are amiss. I will note that when the control building was originally constructed, it was done with this improvement or expansion in mind, so we don't need to do anything to the building itself to allow for this increased, this additional equipment. The, there were, we had budgeted for this item in the 2022 budget. When we actually received the bids, we're about $129,000 short. That will, we're, we're still recommending that this work be done. The budget amendment will be brought forward to you during the mid-year budget amendment. And this is one of those, I think, important items that, that keep the system in the condition that we have, as a community have come to expect. And so the administration recommends approval. And we have, that, I'm sorry.
I move to approve the construction contract with County Line Power LLC in the amount of $339,574 for the installation of high service pumps at the River Road Control Valve Station.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Cody. Questions, discussion?
I just think it's great. I'm glad we didn't, you know, try to save money on a lower system. We really need to move water a long way in our, in our system and that's, that's important. We have to think about the future, so this is excellent.
That little black building across from the wastewater treatment plant, is that where that's at?
Yes, that's it.
Oh, and I wanted to ask, could we get some of the money from our ARPA money that we're short or?
I'm sorry?
You say we're short about $129,000, so maybe we could use some of our ARPA money to, for the shortfall?
There are resources, there are a number of resources that we could pull from. The first of which we'd be looking at the available resource within the sewer fund. And, but the ARPA money, this is an allowable expense.
Yeah, so the sewer fund has the funds to do this, we just didn't appropriate that in the budget.
Okay, well, that's excellent.
Because we, we came short on guessing what it was gonna be.
All right, that's excellent.
One question, and I'm supportive of this too. I enjoyed your comments about keeping our system five star. But I did notice in reading this, the 20, this was based on the 2017 report, so all these numbers are pre-census, right? So I'm assuming that some of the demand that was being used was based off probably the 2010 census anticipated growth, but?
Well, it's all based on water usage, so the census
Not, not really.
Doesn't really impact that very much because our water usage has not gone down just because they say our population has gone down. It's actually rising, so.
Okay, well, that's helpful, yeah, because I kept thinking, is it, is it too out of date? Either way, I would anticipate that this is something we want to do, but
Yeah, that's why we wonder about those census numbers because we don't see our water usage dropping, it actually is increasing and we don't see our, the sewer that we're processing dropping that up either.
Interesting, yeah, because where we seem to lose census wise was the transient population largely, and they're all on township water, right? Primarily, major housing interest. Right. Thank you for the answer. Any other discussion or questions? Motion to approve the construction contract with County Line Power LLC in the amount of $339,574 for the River Road Control Valve Station. Clerk Cody, did you need a roll call on this? You do not, correct? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our last new business item, item C, second reading and adoption of PTXT 2102 zoning ordinance amendments. And just for the public's notice, we did have the first reading at the last board meeting. And I'll hand over the floor to Mr. Stooldryer if you want to introduce this.
Just briefly as a reminder, we're increasing the height allowance for these ground mounted solar energy facilities. That also comes with it some adjustments to the setbacks, so we keep the relative ratios and sightlines and all that intact. Planning Commission recommends approval of this. And I think just briefly, this, this amendment will allow for installation of taller, ground mounted, or ground mounted solar energy systems, which is consistent with, I think, the purpose of the particular zoning code that this falls under. And it's also consistent with the board of trustees' policy to do whatever we can internally and outward to the community to encourage and increase the use of alternative forms of energy. Thank you.
Happy to take any questions or motions or?
Make a
Make a motion, conduct a second reading of the proposed PTXT 2102 zoning ordinance amendments to increase the minimum allowable height and to adjust the minimum setback standards for ground mounted solar energy facilities and to adopt the inventory ordinance as township ordinance number 22-02.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills, further discussion?
Loving it, just go so.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And I, I think like the manager said, we, as trustees and board members, we need to do whatever we can to keep this moving forward. So I think it's, I think it's an excellent
And thank you to staff and the planning commission for getting this done in a relatively short order too.
Yeah.
So it could be taken advantage of.
Good job, James.
Yeah, we were patting you on the back if you didn't notice.
We pat too hard. I'm part of a big group.
Any further discussion? There's a roll call vote to approve the second reading and to adopt the amendment ordinance 22-02. Clerk Cody, roll call please.
Clerk Cody, yes. Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
All yeses?
Well, we took care of new business pretty quickly tonight, but that was kind of the idea with the moving of our attorney back, if we so choose. So with that, that takes us to item 12 on our agenda.
11B.
Yeah.
Well, could we, maybe we should have thought about that because
Yeah.
You know, that way if the people in the public wanted to say something, they wouldn't have to wait around until after we got done with.
If this board would prefer that, I, we can take a motion to change that.
Prefer that?
Unless these guys don't have anything they want to say.
It's Norm, he always wants to say something.
I'll make a motion to, is this okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I am on board.
Yes, for sure.
I'll make a motion to move 11B to 12B.
I thought that's what, I thought this would have moved any.
Well, we're just
We have motions for clarity that we're
Support.
Swapping extended public comment and
Yeah, whatever.
So I got motion by Houck, support, did I hear it?
Neither one, it's either support or whatever.
By Cody, support by Cody. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, we just rearranged the agenda midstream. I don't think we've done that before, so that's a first.
Well, I, I never thought about it until after I looked and thought, if there's any public comment, they don't need to stick around.
I appreciate you catching this bill. So with that, that brings us to
I was catching it too quick, was I?
To extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. With that, if you choose to address this board or the public, please state your name and address for the record and we will open extended public comment at 7:41 PM.
Norm Murley, Carriage Lane, Union Township. I just want to say thank you, thank you. Thank you for passing the road resolution and we're really looking forward to getting the project done this year. I think it's gonna be a nice asset for our, our community in terms of our immediate neighborhood, but I think it's gonna be nice for the township as well. And also thank you for making me a deputy liaison, community representative deputy liaison. So I appreciate that as well, so thank you.
Thanks, Norm.
Thanks for serving. Anyone else?
Since I'm here. For those of you I haven't had the pleasure to meet, I'm Jennifer Hodges with Gordy Frazier. I am your engineer. And so it's a pleasure to be here tonight and thank you, Mark did a great job with the high service pump, so I appreciate that as well, but I will be here for other projects upcoming and it's happy spring, so it's kind of nice to see some construction moving ahead and I appreciate you guys supporting this project, so. And for those of you, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the trip.
You better hope it's spring. But look like it next week.
Try to get the frost laws off for us, Williams.
Anybody else for extended public comment? Thank you. Seeing none coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at 7:43 PM. And with that, we did have some changes suggested to the agenda if this board would choose to.
I was gonna say, they're all looking at me. Okay, I'll make a motion to go into closed session regarding the cases of James. Okay, I'll make a motion to go into closed session regarding the cases of James and Jeremy Zalid versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Circuit Court Case Number 20-016281CK, and Concerned Citizens of Union Township versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Circuit Court Case Number 20-016292CZ. I move to go into closed session to consult with the township's attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the township.
Motion by Rice, support by Cody. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Clerk Cody, would you do roll call, please?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and we'll take a short recess just to allow for those that need to...
All right, we're back in open session at 8:24 PM. Back to our agenda. I'm happy to entertain any discussion of motions if you so feel.
I move that the board meet and close session under Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consider written material from the township's attorney that is exempt from disclosure by Section 131G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Support?
Motion by Rice, support by Bills to go into closed session. Any discussion? See none. Roll call, vote please. Clerk Cody?
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Hope?
Yes, yes.
Trustee Bill?
Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Mookie?
I screwed that up, I'm sorry.
He said yes.
You're right.
Yes.
I think we got some extra votes in there. I think we got some extra votes in there, but it did pass unanimously, so we'll give just one moment for those. Back in open session. That brings us to item 13 on our agenda, manager comments. Mr. Schooldryer, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just briefly, I want to let the board know that we had put out on the street a request for bids as it relates to the Jonathan Lane property that we, that the township owns. And those bids were due back today. I don't think we've had time to review them yet, but, and those bids involve the demolition and complete removal of the concrete block foundation, permanent removal and capping of the municipal water and sanitary sewer leads, the permanent removal and capping of any and all other utility service leads, removing of all the debris that might exist on the property, and then the restoration of the area to grade and using clean fill. So we'll be filling up the hole left from the foundation, any post holes that were around there, and turn it back into something a little bit more presentable. And, you know, I think that property had gotten a little bit of attention because it's similar to the now resolved, I'm happy to report, case dealing with Mr. Tolles. We received pictures from his attorney yesterday, or actually a couple of days ago, and we have reviewed those and communicated to our attorney that those photos demonstrate compliance with the judge's order that was issued, and you were all briefed on a bit, a bit time ago. So that case is wrapped up.
Nice.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just ask it like this tonight. Anybody have some board member comments they would like to give? Press your eyes.
Just a really quick one. I just wanted to give my compliments to the secretaries. If you guys haven't checked out the website, do so. They've been working really hard on updating our website, and it looks really good, so.
Wow. Anybody else? Clerk Cody?
I want to thank Hannah Fitzpatrick for her time with the township. She will be leaving tomorrow.
She will be missed.
Yeah, I wish her well.
Hi.
Trustee Thering?
VAC truck. I was just wondering what the status of the VAC truck is. I know it's a little, probably a little ways from being finished yet, but.
Hundred and thirty-one days and six hours away from this township.
Okay. That's all I wanted. I just kind of popped into my head.
We'll get you one, I don't know.
It's got to be within some days, so many.
My recollection is, is it might have been July or August before we were anticipating.
We'll just wait till then. I'm satisfied till July or August, so.
Be standing in a parking lot with a sponge and a mop, just waiting to wash. I'm sorry.
I just have one thing. Joint meeting, I appreciate some of the comments I heard. I thought it was pretty good. It's hard for me to judge because I was busy trying to help run the meeting, so it was nice to hear that people felt it was constructive, not just trustees, but other, other.